Good evening, everyone. Today is May 16th. The time is 6:00 PM. And this is the Akushnet Planning Commission. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on the town's YouTube channel and also on the cable channel. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
I make a motion to open the planning board meeting. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we get everybody to introduce themselves?
Peter Guyepa, member.
Steve Boucher, member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Ryan Deschamps, member.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
All right. Real quick, let's get through some meeting minutes. Haley sent everybody the meeting minutes to the May 2nd meeting. We were all in attendance. Let me know if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns.
No.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We were going to discuss the decommissioning bonds, going from cash charity to bond for the two Navison projects, 355 Main and 3 and 550 Main. But they did not get their paperwork to us in time. So we are going to skip over that and deal with that at the next meeting. Or when we get the information. Other business. We have a gentleman, Brad Johnson, that came into the office looking for some information. Are you Mr. Johnson?
I am.
Could you please get up, introduce yourself, and give us a brief description of what you're looking for?
Okay, great. My name is Brad Johnson. My wife Rose and I currently live at 175 County Street in Lakeville. We're in the process of selling our home. So we're looking ahead to where we might want to live after we complete that sale. We're considering both purchasing existing property and the possibility of buying a vacant lot to build a home on. And the reason I wanted to talk to you is I've been looking at a particular lot in Akushnet off Nize Lane that has caught my interest. It's been listed for sale for some time, probably because it's currently landlocked. It's a 1.7 acre parcel just south of Nize Lane and east of Route 18. It currently has what appears to be a subdivision road from just to the north, about 500 feet long, that would essentially be an extension of Haley Harley Street, I believe, that dead ends on the north line of that parcel. So I wanted to inquire with you, really more from an advisory standpoint, of the concept of developing this land by building a single-family home on it. Could it be done under the current zoning laws? And/or if variances would be required, what would be the likelihood of such variances being granted?
Since I found out about this a few days ago, I've given this a lot of consideration and been scratching my head on it myself. Was kind of curious if anybody else on the board had any ideas. I have an idea, but I want to toss it out there. Does this gentleman have any?
How big is the lot?
About 1.7 acres, so it's plenty larger.
Seventy-two thousand square feet.
In that road, Harley Street, there's nothing there right now.
Currently, it is wooded. It is, I mean, you wouldn't even know that that was a paved road.
This is an aerial?
It's a 40-foot wide right-of-way, so it's a bit, you know, 10 feet below what the requirement is for a subdivision road, for a local subdivision road. But it appears to be the same width as the existing Harley Street.
There's a house here, there's a house here, there's a house here.
So it's just that one, I'm looking at part of this, one of the abutting lots, I can't see what it says on here, it says, looks like this is F, right? Small little lot. Is that part of this or not?
Can I approach to see what you're?
Yep. I think I've got the scene. This particular lot right here.
No, that's not part of the lot. The lot in question, the 1.7 acre that's described for sale, is just that rectangular lot.
Okay.
Right. And I've read through the zoning ordinance, and I think the widths and the depths, I think everything is essentially compliant, except there's no frontage. And with the dead-end road, that wouldn't provide adequate frontage by itself either.
Right.
So what do you all think? I have a thought myself that I could offer.
Well, we did have a situation a few years back that was very similar to this. There was somebody that was landlocked that had a right-of-way through property, but they had no frontage. So I wasn't on the board at the time, but I'm familiar with it. And, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, essentially, a cul-de-sac would have to be put in at the very end, at least 150 feet.
Diameter?
Circumference. So you have 150 feet of frontage.
Mm-hmm.
And not only that, it would be, you know, a good turnaround for emergency vehicles
and whatnot.
Now, Rick, help me out with this. Would it be, it wouldn't be an A and R, would it? It would be under a subdivision?
No, it's got to be, it's got to be a Form C subdivision, because you'd be creating frontage. So it's a subdivision process. And, I mean, 500 feet of street, plus you're going to lose the land area from the cul-de-sac, you've got to evaluate whether, if, when the cul-de-sac goes in, if the lot still meets all the zoning requirements.
Yep.
I mean, the construction of 500 feet of road plus a cul-de-sac, that's no small.
No, and that gets to a couple of my questions that I have. So regarding the size of the cul-de-sac, I actually laid this out, and a 50-foot radius cul-de-sac, which I believe is what the subdivision regulations call for.
It would have to, whatever is the minimum in the subdivision?
I think it's 50-foot radius. That would still keep me above 60,000 square feet in total lot area. What I don't know is that that, a cul-de-sac of that size would, can I, again, can I approach? Does anybody have a pen I can use? So, again, I laid this out, a 50-foot radius cul-de-sac would be pretty large, and it would put, you know, that distance there would not be tremendous, you know, maybe 100 feet or something like that. I don't know how that would, you know, how lot widths and minimum lot widths, minimum lot depths, how that would affect that.
What is the size of that lot? I know it's 1.7, but dimension-wise?
Yeah, I can't remember.
All right, that's fine.
There are other dimensional requirements that the building inspector reviews, and we certainly would not be giving any advice as to whether a potential lot would meet the current zoning.
You mean setbacks of a building from lot lines and things?
Setbacks, and there are other dimensional requirements in there relative to a square of land, a circle of land within the parcel. You know, there are other things out there that you may have to comply with. The building inspector is the one who determines that.
I see. So getting back to your question, you know, your point that building that road would not be cheap, what would the construction standards of that road be? I got a copy of the subdivision bylaw, and it describes, I think, three classes of subdivision roads. This would, I'm sure, be in the lowest class, I think it's called, I think it's a local road. And it, you know, it describes a 50-foot right-of-way, this is only 40 currently, so that would be a variance, with a sidewalk on one side, you know, it's a substantial town road essentially. Would that be required to serve one residential lot?
That's up to the board. Technically, yes. I mean, in a formal submission.
Right.
But the answer is that there's no right answer right now. And even a 20-foot wide road with a cul-de-sac on the end, so emergency vehicles could turn around, that's still going to be quite expensive.
Oh, I understand. I understand. Yeah, you know, my thinking is, is a road of almost any reasonable width, built to the standards described in the bylaw, would make this project not financially feasible.
And it's not just the construction of the road. I mean, we don't have any information relative to grading of that paper street, how the proposed road would be graded, where does the storm drainage go once the road is in place?
Of course.
You know, these are all questions that need to be answered. We just recently had one submission on Keen Road where the original proposal for storm drainage got thrown out the window.
Yes. And you don't know that until you've put together an entire engineering plan and drawings and present it to the board.
Certainly, there's got to be something, at least in terms of proposed grading and proposed slope of the road. And again, I, you know, haven't had to evaluate all of the dimensional requirements in the bylaw, but isn't there like a circle that has to be within the lot?
That never actually...
Or does that only apply to the village district?
Right, no, it's, they tried doing the circle of continuous upland, but it's still a square, it's still 100 by 100 square that you need. That circle never actually made it through.
I seem to remember what you're talking about in the bylaw, and essentially, I think you're right, you would have to be able to put a 100 by 100 square somewhere in the parcel, right?
Right.
Yeah. And I think that would be okay here.
As much as I hate to say this, but is it possible? I think it is. Your best bet is to go to an engineering firm, and this is, unfortunately, it's going to cost a little bit of money, but if they do a preliminary, which is just the basic set of plans, gives us an idea of the size of the lot, they, all the engineering firms, they know, most of them know, all the dimensions needed for a buildable lot. And then they can play. You can maybe put the cul-de-sac on one corner if you can continue the road over, you know what I mean? There's different ways of doing it. Unfortunately, we can't just say here, yes, you can do this, and no, you can't do that. My other question is, would you, the road, would it necessarily have to be, it wouldn't necessarily have to be asphalted with sidewalks and whatnot, because it's only servicing one house?
Well, yes and no. There are three, there are two other lots that presently don't have frontage on a constructed road. So really, that road is going to be giving access for three lots.
Except for, I don't believe constructing these roads would give those lots adequate frontage. What's the minimum required again, 150?
It's not just the minimum required. If they're grandfathered lots, they don't have to meet the minimum requirements. So again, there are, there's quite a few issues relative to trying to develop a building lot there. And, I mean, if a lot, and there are legal definitions of what qualifies as a grandfathered lot, it requires research into the deeds to see who owns it, how long they've owned it, was it owned in common with another lot next to it? These are all questions that we can't answer until, you know, information is put in front of us. And unfortunately, that means there's some legal things that need to be put in front of us, there are some engineering things that need to be put in front of us, and there needs to be a little bit of a look into whether, you know, additional lots are going to get frontage that allows them to be built on. I mean, there's another thing that doesn't show on this map is if there are any wetlands on the site.
Yeah, they're all actually, along the far western end.
I mean, that's going to affect your ability to put a house and a septic system there also.
Understood. I did research that. There's plenty of space to put in that lot outside of the 100-foot main.
Would this lot be serviced by town water, or is a well required?
My intent is that it would not be. It would not be, it would have a well.
A well is another thing that can utilize a fair amount of lot area in order to locate it according to border health requirements for citing for a private well. So you've got a lot of questions, and I don't think there's a simple answer, a simple yes or no answer.
Depending on what, I mean, depending on what the price of this lot is, because right now, lots in Akushnet, a buildable lot in Akushnet's expensive.
Right.
So if this is cheap enough, then you go, like I said, go to a good engineering firm, and just, they would set up a preliminary. It's just bare bones with just the bare dimensions to give us answers that we would need. Building inspector would look it over, everybody would look it over before it comes to us. They'll give, sets it to everybody, they'd all look it over, give their two cents. And then, once we've looked at it, and the engineers actually looked at it and said, yes, you could do this because of this, 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 and this, they have, they've been doing this for a long time where they know what can and can't be done, then you can come back to us, and then we could, you know, say yes or no.
But it's a conceptual design, essentially.
Yes, exactly.
And actually, when you do that, you know, lay out your cul-de-sac, you know, lay out your square, you're going to have to do something relative to wetlands, and you would solicit an opinion from the building inspector. With that plan, do you feel that this layout would satisfy the zoning requirements for building law?
Build a town.
Do you know if there's lots even perivable?
No, I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't know.
But just a note, I believe there is sewer up, right up that top end of Nize Lane that you...
Okay, that's good to know. That would be a long run.
I know it's up in this area over here, on the opposite side over here of Nize Lane, but I don't know where that line goes, so that's something that you, it'd be, my guess is, you'd have to go see the DPW, but I believe that it's, you would more than likely need to have a pump.
Oh, I totally agree. 500 feet, essentially, you know, there's not really any change in elevation between the building site and the road, so it would certainly need a pump, I think.
So that's another cost that you've got to look at. Can, could I possibly do a septic system? If the answer is yes, can I tie into the sewer? Maybe, maybe not.
It would be a cost.
That's up to the sewer, but even whether you can tie in or not, I mean, just because the sewer goes by your property, doesn't necessarily mean you can tie into it. You know, there can be a tie-in fee, plus the hard cost of the pump and the line, all 500 feet of it.
That's why I was saying more specific.
There's a lot of considerations with this particular property. And if you're running, if you're running 500 feet of sewer up the street, up to your lot, you know, do you want to run water at the same time?
I think I would rather not do either, because I think a well and not septic would be cheaper if they're feasible.
That's up to you. And in which case, again, that's part of whether the lot is going to be a buildable lot, when you get done with it or not.
Yeah. The cost of the roadway is my greatest concern, and I think it's easily what could be the number-one showstopper. So, you know, I would need to get a handle on that before I really even consider anything else.
Yeah, again, I would probably just go to an engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have an idea on construction costs. I mean, it could easily run you $150, $200 a foot to put...
Yeah, I believe it. It all depends on the construction standards that are required. And, you know, if I can build a gravel driveway, that's one tenth the cost of any local septic project.
It rolls us back into the question, is that now going to provide frontage for two other lots besides yours?
Yeah, these lots all may be conjoined, that you can't see on paper, you know, the one up on the...
You mean, under the same ownership?
Underneath the same ownership.
They're not, actually.
Oh, they're not?
They're not.
Well, not the lot that's on the top left, right there near Nize Lane, I see that...
You mean the little triangular lot?
Well, you got the triangle lot, there's obviously a building on it, assuming a house, but the L-shaped lot, okay, that could be part of that lot.
Oh, you mean co-owned with another above it?
Well, it could be, right, yeah, they could be, they could be conjoined right there. It could be owned in common.
I think I checked all the names. I think they're all different, but, yeah, that's a possibility.
Yeah, which would help your...
So I think what I'm hearing is that if I wanted to build anything but a full-blown subdivision road as described in the bylaw, a variance of some kind would be needed.
You would have to request relief from some of the requirements, because it's a Form C, every one of those neighbors is going to be at the meeting.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, it's, yeah, okay.
It's not, it's not an easy task at all.
Even though there's already an existing town right-of-way to the lot?
It's a paper street, and it has no status to provide frontage. And even if it was built, you still wouldn't have, the end of the, the end of the street is not considered frontage for a lot.
You need a cul-de-sac.
It's considered access, but not frontage.
I see.
So you don't even have 40 feet of frontage for that lot.
Oh, really?
Yeah, really.
Yeah. Okay.
That one I'm sure of. I've been through a number of times before.
Well, yeah, I was figuring a cul-de-sac would be needed anyway, so, I think that's all I've got.
Yeah. I hope we were helpful.
Oh, definitely, very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks for coming in. Have a good night. I mean, to make it even more complicated, even though the lots that he's talking about are in separate ownership today, if they were held in common at the time of the change in the zoning bylaw that made those lot sizes and those lot frontages unbuildable, then there was, it still may be unbuildable. It may not be a separate grandfathered lot.
You're talking about the other, a budding lot. You're not talking about his lot?
The other budding lots. No, not this.
Even if it was, so you'd only have a maximum of three. It'd be the one he's looking at and the other two. So let's just say, worst-case scenario, those two became buildable lots, you could still get, even if, even if you would have put in, even if you would have put in a gravel road, and obviously, a lot of waivers that you would have to request, you could still put three houses on a common driveway on a gravel road.
Up to the board.
Up to the board when it comes to the decision of the board, but our bylaw right now has, you're going to have three houses on a common driveway. It depends on what kind of waivers he's looking for, it depends on, I mean, obviously, there's some wetlands over here, there's, he's just going to look at the cost-effectiveness of it. And the best way to do that, in my opinion, is get an engineer to do a preliminary.
Do a preliminary. You're going to have to spend a little bit of money.
Yeah, spend a little bit, but then if he thinks it's more possible, then, it's a nice-sized lot, 7,200 square feet, it's a nice-sized lot.
I know I'm not on the mean, but I know by it, he would be building a road though, and all those people's, like, front...
Again, it all depends on how much space, it all depends on how much space there was.
Yeah, it's so funny, because I live right over there, so I drove by, and I'm like, that's strange.
It all depends on how much space there is. All right. So let's move on. All right. John Johnson went, okay. Gentlemen, we are going to go into executive session for a little bit. This executive session on the general law, Chapter 30A, 21A3, is to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position regarding the town of Akushnet Planning Board Land Court case involving Akushnet Sola and a civil action case regarding Cushing Sola of the public body, and the chair so declares, and the board will return to public session, concluding the executive session. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? We have to do a roll call, vote, please.
All right, so moved on that.
So moved.
Second, okay. Second is?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will be right back. Can I get a motion to go out of executive session and back into regular meeting sessions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me get a roll call.
Aye, Rick Ellis.
Ryan Deschamps. Aye. Mark Francois. Aye.
Steve Boucher. Aye. Peter Guyepa.
Okay, back in regular meeting. After discussion, can I get a motion?
Is there a motion to approve the settlement agreement and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of the planning board?
We have a motion, gentlemen, and I get a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I don't think we need a roll call.
I'll do aye. I'll do aye on it. I'll see what happens.
We have a unanimous aye. All five are in favor. Roll call.
No, all right. The town's lawyer reviewed that.
Town lawyer reviewed it. I reviewed it. We all reviewed it.
I try to make sure, my only caveat is, as long as it doesn't basically say, we're going to give them a special permit, period.
No, no. Your reason we can't stop, we can't stop it if it's because of those two reasons. Anything else, we can, yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'll sign these here in a moment.
If I could have a pen, I just, the whole grandfathering lot thing, that's another one of these very convoluted things in the state law. I'm just going to draw on this plan a little bit. We've got this guy's lot.
Well, he's drawing and...
He's making his own notes.
This has got nothing to do with him.
No.
All right, if, if at one point, the same person owned these two lots, and the zoning bylaw was changed that made the size of this lot non-conforming, that guy has three years to sell this lot off as a grandfathered lot. If it's more than three years, even if he sells it later on, you know, like today, it's not a grandfathered lot. He lost his grandfather status.
I didn't know that. You're like, three years to grandfather.
Three years, if you own the lot, if you own the lot in common, and the zoning bylaw change comes up that makes one or both of them non-conforming, then you've got to sell them, and I don't know that you have to get your building permit. That, I have to think about.
If these were held in common, this line here would dissolve within, after so many years.
Another complicated question. It depends, I could have two owners on this, you know, me and my wife, and one owner on that, and now it's not...
In common.
It's not in common. So it's a, it is a complicated question. Usually, the building inspector makes a determination, but, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Yeah, those are questions for either building inspector or town council to get the right answer. All right, one last thing here. Mr. Rick Ellis was out for a week and two, missed a meeting, so Rick watched the video of the past meetings and got caught up with one particular, which is the Keen Road subdivision. I am going to have you sign this Mullins Rule to put into the record stating that you're all caught up, and gives you rights to vote on the next one.
That's a problem. I did view all of the meetings that I was unable to attend, but this is the only one that involved a public hearing.
Correct.
And it's only one of the meetings on Keen Road that I haven't been to, so the Mullins Law will apply.
Correct. Yep, it's all filled out.
This is town clerk's.
Yep.
Sue.
All right, gentlemen, our next meeting...
I think that, I believe that was the May 18th meeting. I don't know if it's...
It was, it says it right there. It was, it says that right there.
Okay.
May 18.
Yep.
That's it. Our next meeting is June 6th. We have a couple of weeks off. Anybody have anything else they'd like to talk or discuss?
Motion to adjourn.
You got a motion? You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.